Okay, good evening. My name is Nina Rosamondo. As president of the League of Women Voters South County, I'd like to welcome everyone to the first virtual forum of Meet the Candidates Night for the Westerly Town Council candidates. All nine candidates for the seven-member town council are here this evening to share their views and positions on important issues to the residents of Westerly. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters. And the sponsorship of the debate is not an endorsement by the League of any candidate. The timers tonight, if you would wave, are League members Linda Bongiellati and Christine Martone. Candidates were given a warning at 30 seconds, then 15 seconds remaining of their time to respond. A red paddle will be raised when it is time to stop. I would now like to welcome our moderator, Ms. Antonia Ayers-Brown. Ms. Ayers-Brown is the Newport Bureau Reporter for Publics Radio, which is Rhode Island's NPR member network. She previously reported on Illinois state politics and the COVID-19 pandemic for the Chicago Tribune. She has decided to move to Rhode Island. We're thrilled to have her. She's an experienced moderator and familiar with candidate debates. Ms. Ayers-Brown, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Antonia Ayers-Brown again. Before we begin, I'd like to describe the format for this evening's forums. Could we begin by having all the candidates please raise their hands and state their name and candidate number? We'll do that in order of candidate number, starting with Mr. Cook.
Caswell Cook, candidate number one.
Sharon Ahern, number two.
Ryan McEwen, number two, three.
Jared Belanger, number four.
Thank you. Chris Duhamel, high five.
Karen Seoffe, number six.
Suzanne Jorno, number seven.
We cannot hear you, Mr. Lepitra.
Dylan Lepitra, number eight.
Great.
Philip Overton, number nine.
And with that, you can hear that the order of the candidates and closing statements and responding to questions has been determined by drawing of names prior to the forum. Names were drawn by a hat to determine the order of responding. Questions have been submitted by residents of Westerly and League members via email and an anonymous forum on Facebook and vetted by Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters South County. No questions will be taken by the public this evening. There will be an opening statement and closing statement of one minute each. Candidates will deliver their opening statements, beginning with candidate number one, and the closing statements will be in reverse order. All candidates will be asked each question and will have exactly one minute to answer. A candidate may choose to pass on answering any question. The first question will be addressed to candidate one and proceed to candidates two through eight. The second question will be addressed to candidate two, followed by candidates three through eight, and then back, or candidate nine, sorry, and then back to candidate one. And this will continue until all of the questions have been asked. A round of yes/no questions will follow, again being addressed to all candidates one through nine and so on. The forum will end with one-minute closing statements, beginning with candidate nine. Candidates, just a reminder to please mute your mics until it's your turn to speak and then mute again once you've completed your answer after one minute. And now we will begin with opening statements. Mr. Cook, please begin.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you to the League for putting this forum on. My name's Caswell Cook, and I first got elected to the town council back in 2002 when I was 28, so that gives away my age. I'm still pretty young, right, 46? I served on the council for 12 years and then took four years off. And in 2018, I ran again, and I've been on the council for the last two years. I'm seeking my final term on the Westerly Town Council. There's not a lot you can say in one minute, but I would tell everyone that they could go to my website to find out more at caswellcook.com. But the one thing that I will say is that I always tell it like it is. I'm always straight up with people. If I disagree with you, I'll let you know. I've learned over the years to kind of be a duck and let it flow off your back because you get a lot of criticism in this job. But I've also learned to be fair and I've also learned to listen. So if you would like to see this type of person continue on the town council, then I'm going to come right out and ask you, please vote for me on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ahern.
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I am very much a neophyte compared to Caswell. I just finished my first term on council. I'm basically a very, very boring person by trade. I'm an attorney, but good kind. I'm a maritime attorney with a master's in environmental law. And right now, I am pursuing my certification in animal cruelty investigation, but due to COVID, many things have been put on pause. I'm what we used to jokingly call the boomerang generation. I grew up in Westerly, lived away for a long time and came back. I have the honor of having been the first, and as far as I can tell, last, chief of staff for the town. And at this point, I tend to agree with Caswell. I think this council has worked well together. I think that we have rode in the same direction, and I too would like to try another term. Thank you.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I, my name is Ryan McEwen. I'm 67 years old. I've been married to my wife for 47 years. I have one son and three, twin five-year-old grandkids. Those are my happy times. I'm a partner in Sirens McEwen Contractors. I've had a lot of past service where I volunteered for Citizens Advisory Committee, the zoning board, '93 to '96. Member of the Comprehensive Plan Citizens Advisory Board, member of the Westerly Police Facility Building Committee. And I've only, I'm a minor compared to Caswell. I've only been on five terms on the council. And I started '96, '98, went on to, took time off, went on, took time off. And I, when I came back here, I just found out that I really enjoy doing the work. And to me, it's not work, it's enjoyment. And I would love to do it again. Thanks.
Mr. Belanger.
Hi, and thank you for having me. I'm Jared Belanger. Raised in Westerly, went to Westerly High School. I actually have spent 25 years pretty much in the restaurant business, all the way from the back of the house to ownership. I currently work with my wife. She owns RMG Photography here in Westerly. I have six dogs. I live in Dunn's Corners, and that's exactly where I grew up, and I live here now. This is my first time running for public office. I've been watching the town council since the days of Channel 13. And I think the most important part of government is local government because it affects you directly. And I'd like to jump feet-first in and, you know, work with the people on the council, the people of the town, and represent my constituency. Thank you.
Mr. Duhamel.
Hi, I'm Chris Duhamel, the engineer for town council. I've lived on Elm Street for 38 years with my wife, Aggie. We raised all of our kids, our four kids in Westerly. They all attended Wesley schools. They're very successful now. I'm very proud of them. But the best thing is they all left. We are now empty nesters. And they return often, though. They return with our seven grandkids. So we have a great, great time now. We love, we all love Westerly. I've served on the town council for 16 years, also starting in 2002. And most of my success has been working with the staff, working with the Public Works Committee, improving our water system, improving our roads and our drainage systems and keeping in environmental conformance. And that's my specialty as an engineer. So I look forward to running again for two years and serving with these fine people.
Ms. Seoffe.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Karen Seoffe. I have served on the council now for one and a half terms. I was brought in when there was an empty seat. Someone had vacated, and I was appointed onto the council. Having worked for the town of Westerly for 12 years in the capacity of human resource director, I was thrilled to try out my hand at being on council. Loved it so much, I thought I'd run from 2018 until now in 2020. So I am looking for my last term as well, and I'm hoping to get in. I'm passionate about Westerly. I've been here now for 25 years. My children have grown up here in the area. And to us, this is home. We couldn't think of going anywhere else. I'm hoping that you will vote for me on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jorno.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Jorno. Thank you for having us. For anyone that doesn't know, I'm the vice president of the town council currently. We're just ending the very first term that I've ever had in public service here. And I enjoy every minute. I enjoy each and every one of the councillors. And the work we do for Westerly is phenomenal. I'm really excited about it. Educationally, I have a Juris Doctorate degree from Western New England College School of Law. I have a Bachelor of Science degree from State University of New York at Brockport. Professionally, I own my own private investigation business. On the council, I was appointed as liaison for the Westerly Library in Wilcox Park. And I really truly love that position on the Board of Trustees. I also am the liaison for the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce. All of these things I love and more, but nothing I love more than my family. We have two beautiful children, my daughter Mariana and our son Tony. And I'd like to continue on with this council. Thank you.
Mr. Lepitra.
Hi, my name is Dylan Lepitra. I have a tax business in town, and I'm running because of the issues I could be facing in this town in the next couple of years. I'd like to just keep it a small town with small values, small, small values, small-town values. And I guess some of the issues we're going to be talking about and the questions coming up, so I'll save the answers for that. Thank you.
Mr. Overton.
Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Philip Overton. I am a certified financial planner. I have been in practice 37 years. I am a United States Coast Guard veteran, honorably discharged. I'm a retired dive master with the Professional Association of Dive Instructors. I have served two prior terms on the Westerly Town Council. And love this town. And I've lived here 27 years. I'm married to my lovely wife, Fay. Fay is born and raised in Westerly. And I'm looking forward to helping the town and use my financial planning skills to help the town move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And with that, we will move on to the first section of questions with one-minute responses. As a reminder, the order is set and it won't change. So the person that preceded you will always precede you in the questions. I will offer reminders to anyone if you lose track, but you should feel free to unmute yourself after the person, if they finish at one minute. I will, I'll stop you if you go beyond one minute. So with that, we'll move on to question one. There is one hearing on proposed changes to the Comprehensive Plan and another on the proposed ordinances scheduled to be held in October. Given the unanimous vote by the incumbent town council to sell the Tower Street building and land, despite the Planning Board's strong recommendation to keep the building as a community center and sell seven and a half acres of the land, please explain your vision for commercial and residential development and open space in Westerly over the next five years. For question one, Mr. Cook, you may begin.
Well, Tower Street had been a failing community center for many years, and the school committee had said, "We can't afford this. We can't afford this." And so for years, this was in front of us. Meantime, Bradford School got closed. So what's the council left with? Two empty lots in the town of Westerly. And what's the need? Well, I think there's a need for a community center. I think there's a need for rec facilities. What makes the most sense? Selling the Tower Street property. Because the Tower Street property could bring in over $2 million, whereas selling Bradford would not bring in much because there's no sewers there, things like that. So I would propose taking the monies that is realized from the sale of Tower Street and turning Bradford in to a state-of-the-art recreational and community center facility that makes money, not loses money, and to try to figure out and work on public transportation to get folks to and from that. So that's what I would say. We can't have both pieces of property sitting there costing us money. We had to make a choice. We were the leaders in this. We made the decision. We listened to what people had to say. And we decided, look, it's, this is what's best for the town to sell this piece of property and not to sell Bradford.
Thank you. Ms. Ahern.
Well, that's a lot of questions in that question that you posed to us. I would say that when it comes to Tower Street specifically, I would sincerely hope that someone can put together, whether, I tend to call them angel investors, but I'm still hoping that they can cobble together some sort of a proposal that the council can consider that we could maybe keep that as open space. I have not given hope up in terms of the community stepping forward with something creative because we do have to consider the tax base. But I don't think that that has necessarily been ruled out, despite what people have said. And to Caswell's point, when it comes to Bradford, I tend to move a little bit more slowly. I'm not convinced that that is an ideal spot. But I think it's important that we all keep an open mind. And I know that there are going to be numerous public hearings on these issues.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I mean, I think the council unanimously decided on this because at the end of the day, we are in a COVID-19 economy. And between the two buildings, sometimes we could spend between a half a million to 600,000 a year on energy insurance, maintaining buildings that are vacant. We can't afford that. It just does not make fiscal sense. And then most biggest dollar we can get is for Tower Street. And I think we should sell that. And as Caswell said, I think a great idea is take some of the proceeds and let's upgrade Bradford and make that into the facility we all wanted to make. Just, it's, it's the fiscal dilemma we're in that really is making everybody say we have to sell it because we can't afford to hold on to it. That is the bottom line. We can't afford it.
Thank you. Mr. Belanger.
Yes, hi. So both places are closed. I don't know if, you know, if, my personal opinion is Bradford School is so far out of the way. I know we want a community center, but it's so far out of the way. And if we take a look about all the people who live in the Fields View, Red Barn Drive, those neighborhoods, if anybody's been out there lately or in the past, I don't know, 12 years, you can't walk down the street. It's not like it is in Tower Street. You can walk down, walk up Narragansett Avenue or down Tower Street. Maybe there is another, we could take another look and see if we can, you know, actually make money or at Tower Street School. I know we can, you know, you get the most amount of money for the piece of property, but maybe we're not looking in the right direction. And maybe we can utilize Bradford School for something, maybe if we think outside the box a little bit. It's way out there. You're not going to get the kind of people to come, the amount of people to come from the rest of town out to Bradford, even with public transportation. Because, look, let's be honest, not a lot of people go to Bradford for anything.
Your time is up. Thanks. Mr. Duhamel.
Thank you. Bradford, I think, is a great location for a community center. You might have to pack a lunch if you go from downtown Wesley to go all the way to Bradford, but I don't think it's that far out of the way. And it's, the facility is, it's got recreation. It's got a lot of room for a lot of uses. I think having Tower Street on sewers and water will bring the highest value to the town, or we can reinvest into our infrastructure, our building facilities with that sale. You had asked for what type of residential development. Well, affordable housing is a key goal of the new Comprehensive Plan, making certain that our kids can start here, can grow up here. And the price of housing, as it is with this COVID jacking up the price of all the homes so that it's all out-of-towners that are moving in and buying our properties. It's, we really need to look, look at creating affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duhamel. Ms. Seoffe.
Thank you. You know, I've been very vocal about putting Tower Street on the market because after all, we're not in the habit of storing buildings. Having Tower Street and Bradford is an issue for me. I'm not so sure that Bradford could or would be utilized appropriately. I hear the cries that it's too far away, yet I know, having lived here so long, it certainly was utilized as a school. With that said, I'm going to go back to Tower Street and say, there is a possibility that someone comes and purchases that property for a community center use, but I don't want the town to operate it. I would like it to be, perhaps as Sharon calls them, angel investors who may come and decide to do something there. But again, I'm not in the habit of storing buildings. It's too costly for us to keep them, to operate them during the winter, to leave them to be destroyed by others. I'm not going to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Jorno.
Thank you. One of the most important things that we have here in the town of Westerly is that we have excellent nonprofit organizations that have a passion for our community. And when they see that there's a need, they fulfill that. They do it by grant writing. They do it because they have a passion, and they do it because they get the rest of the community behind them. That being said, a lot of those programs that were housed in Tower Street, Councilor Ahern and myself were on an ad hoc committee where we helped to find them new homes for those. For those that were not moved at the time, we had, we gave them options as to where they could have locations at. As far as Bradford goes, my son attended Bradford School up till the day it closed. I drove him to and from, and I live in the State Street School District. I drove him to and from because it's not that far away. And the benefits that you have for your children outweigh any time or travel that you might think that's there. So what we need to do is, we need to sell Tower Street, and we need to use those proceeds for other town programs we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jorno. Mr. Lepitra.
Well, it sounds to me like it's been decided that Tower Street's already being sold. I might have been inclined to keep it and use it as something else. So centrally located, such a nice spot. But if we do sell it, hopefully we do something really good with the money. That's all.
Mr. Overton.
Thank you very much. I take a long-range view of things that we're doing. And I think that this, I understand the reason why the current town council wants to sell Tower Street. But I think that it's short-sighted. That is a, one of the few, if any, centrally-located properties in town that is available for future growth of Westerly government. I do think it's short-sighted. I do think that later on down the road, the citizens are going to say, "We should have never sold that property." My feeling is that we should take the building down and perhaps turn it into another sports field, which we are desperately in need of. But long range in Westerly, we are going to regret selling that property because we will need it at some point in the future, and it will cost a lot more to replace than what we're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. If the pandemic causes a budget shortfall due to a reduction in tax revenue and in federal and state funds to the town, what specific items in the 2021 budget are you willing to fight for? And what are you willing to cut? Ms. Ahern.
Well, first of all, I'd like to point out to everyone in the public, don't panic. We are doing very well. Westerly taxpayers are strong. We are not at that crisis point. So please don't take that as a takeaway from that question. When it comes to what I would fight for, I'm a basic, being an attorney. I'm basic when it comes to what civics are and what civics are not. You have to fund public safety. You really have to keep anything that has to do with public health, such as wastewater and our water system intact and the Department of Public Works. We obviously want to do the best we can for our schools. And other than that, you have to be very bare-to-the-bone if it comes to that. And you look at your contingency fees. You look at your restricted funds. You absolutely shut down all spending. And you keep a tight eye on the budget, which is what this very council promised to do.
Thank you. Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I think, as Sharon said, that's something we started. And I think if we ever get into that situation, everything has to be looked at and everything has to be on the table, depending on the severity of the cash that we're going to be short of. If it's a little bit of money here or there, you might be able to make it up. But if it's a lot of money, seriously, you're going to have to make some serious choices that are going to affect a lot of things. The town has to survive. And hopefully, this won't last forever. But we have to get through the time that we are going to be in. The state is low in money. And then I can, you can see coming that they're not going to be giving us all the money we need. They're going to be cutting back on the school money. And then that's going to come back to the town to try to help them. So it's still going to be a problem.
Mr. McEwen, your time is up, but I wanted to ask, is there a specific part of the budget that you would look to, to make cuts if it became necessary?
Were you asking me, or was that another question?
Yes, following up on your response, just because the time ran out. But I was wondering if there is a specific portion of the budget or an area of it that you would...
As I said earlier, everything is on the table. If you have to make up money, you're not going to just shut down one thing. You're trying to take a little bit from everybody so everybody can survive a little bit, not at what they want to, but they can survive.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Yeah, that's helpful. I appreciate it. Mr. Belanger.
I actually have to agree with Mr. McEwen. Sometimes you have to take a little from everywhere. So the, not one specific group takes, you know, takes the brunt of a cut. But if people take a look at the ballot and they vote no on referendum two, there's $1 million right there until the COVID situation is taken care of. You can find money in a lot of places. And right there is $1 million. You cannot cut public safety. You cannot, you know, cut from the Water Department. Those things are imperative to the health and safety of the town. So there, I do agree. But if, you know, things get really tight, you're going to have to take some from, some from everybody.
Mr. Duhamel.
Yes. Things that I would fight for in the budget would be, it's already been said, public safety is paramount. Maintenance, I also would consider paramount. I would fund it differently, though, for maintenance. I would look for major improvements of the infrastructure. The wastewater treatment plant is coming up that's being required to be maintained. So I would take a bond that can be stretched out over 10, 15, 20 years to limit the effect on the immediate budget. I mean, Wesley is very good handling money. We closed on July 1 with a surplus of $1 million. That's during the COVID event, the shutdown event, that we were very prudent at looking at expenditures. We delayed some hiring. We delayed some purchasing. So Wesley is very good at managing money, and I would want to continue that. But one thing I don't want to ever lose is subsidies, the Basic Needs Network, the volunteers that take care of our most needy. There's a small amount of money that the town of Wesley donates to give such a...
Thank you, Mr. Duhamel.
Ross, thank you.
Ms. Seoffe.
Thank you. You know, in this, in this council that we currently have, we were very cautious when it came time for the budget. And one of the terms I threw out was that the budget needed to remain fluid. We had to understand that if, in fact, COVID affected us in this, in this very vein, that we needed to be very careful about what we were doing and looking for money that we could potentially manipulate in the budget if we had to. So I think that we did a good job. You know, I never want to... we did a good job. You know, I never want to balance a budget on the backs of our residents, so we tried to keep our taxes low. Yet, we did some cuts. We, you know, we didn't do severe cuts, but we did some cutting. If, in fact, we had to go at it again, I'm sure we could, you know, like they say, throw it all on the table, have a spending freeze, have a hiring freeze, and we could, we could manage. We're, you know, we're in decent shape. We fund things accordingly, and so we could back up a little bit if we had to.
Thank you, Ms. Siafi. Ms. Jorno?
I have to echo what my fellow counselors have said to this point. We have done quite well. It was something that no one was used to at the time, but we sat down, we went through it. We were very cautious of spending, and we do have that million-dollar surplus. And that's, that's something to be proud of, because other places panicked, we didn't. And I think we're very fortunate when we can look through our programming and say, here locally, we have, you know, the best programs for our social services. I would never take a penny away from the subsidies that we need to continue to provide services to this town. Obviously, I believe that public safety, public health, the water system, and education are key. If we were going to have to make cuts, we are going to have to sit down and look at what's not making us money and what's losing money. And at this point, we all know that that's the transfer station. So just to be quite frank, we would have to come back to the table when it came to that and see where we're at. But I don't want anyone to panic because I don't think we're going to get there. We are handling things well, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaPietra?
Well, I too was under the impression that we had a million-dollar surplus, so that's a good start. And I don't, I don't know the budget. I haven't seen it. I have to look at, I have to look at the whole thing and review it. But I'm also waiting for this $900 million that Gina is going to be passing on in the next two years, and maybe that could fill in a few gaps. I wouldn't cut schools. I like the work the council's been doing on the, all the road work they've been doing the last couple of years. Continue doing that. But I'd have to see the budget. I've never seen it before, so. Thank you.
Mr. Overton?
Thank you. We're in a very fortunate situation here in Westerly, in which we have a very, very resilient tax base. So I don't see any doom and gloom scenarios coming up. If anything, during COVID, we have received tremendous investment from, in our shoreline properties. So I don't see an issue as far as tax goes. Obviously, there's pockets that are not doing well, restaurant business, entertainment, et cetera. But for the most part, I think we have a very resilient tax base, and it's not anything that I'm really concerned about. One thing that I would not cut is public safety. Most important aspect of living in any community is that you are living in a safe environment. So public safety would be completely off the table for me, but everything else would be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. There have been two school bond referendums...
Hang on, I don't think I got to answer that one.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Cook. Please, please continue.
Well, every year since I've been elected, in 2002, we hear one thing. This is going to be the toughest budget year ever. And I laugh because every year's a tough year. But Westerly, we have a great base, and we have a surplus. We not only have a surplus this year, we have a surplus in the bank from years prior. So when things do go south, we have a backup, unlike other towns that declare bankruptcy upstate, things like that. Look, we're not the federal government. We're not the state government. We take care of things here in Westerly and make sure that our economy is good locally. Bottom line is, we went through the recession in 2008, 2009, the flood in 2010, Superstorm Sandy. I was on all those councils. We got through it. We had to spend money. We kept the taxes low, and we still were able to accomplish everything that needed to be accomplished. So I never foresee us having to take a knife and go at, you know, the budget like, like people might think we might have to. I think we're doing very, very well, and I want to continue that.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, and I apologize again for not moving back.
All right.
Next question is that there have been two school bond referendums on school-building projects in the past four years, which have been defeated. In each case, the town council was unable to completely support the plans. If elected, what would you do to bridge cooperation and communication between the town council and the school committee for future school projects?
I was, I don't think, the last bond referendum that failed was because the school and the town weren't on the same page. Now, I remember the night after, the meeting after that one fell through, I got on spoke, it's on citizens' comments that I think it's time to work together to get the schools renovated, because we all know it needs to be done, and we have to work together. Not having two different ideas, work together, work as one unit, the school and the town, because that is the only way we're going to get the citizens to go along with spending money on a referendum to repair the schools, which needs to be done in a way we, I think, that the residents will approve it.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Mr. Belanger?
Well, my opinion is, I think everybody could get behind one of these bonds if they... All right, so over the, over several years, decades, why weren't the buildings taken care of? The proper prior planning, preventing bad performance, that kind of thing. So when you come many years later and ask for a bunch of money to fix something, where did all the money that was supposed to fix or to maintain these buildings, where is it, and why aren't they maintained? And that's a question that the people want answers to. So people aren't going to vote for just a blank check to, hey, fix the schools, here's the money. Unfortunately, you know, yes, the town council's actually done a very good job of keeping our budget under control. But to have to go and ask people to vote on, here, here's a bunch of money, and we'll see in 20 more years to get another bunch of money, because we didn't do what we were supposed to do in the first place. So if we can get that going, if you want to consider that working with each other and being on the same page, well, then, sure, we can probably do that.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. Mr. Duhamel?
The main thing is, the main question is, how will the town council work with the school committee? And I think the future town council has to recognize that the school committee are equal. They have a very difficult job raising or educating our children. So in many cases, their job is much harder than the town council's job. I would say, working with the school committee, looking at options, and maintenance, this council has, this last council has been maintenance-focused. How is any building going to be maintained, not just the first year, the, the initial purchase, but how every year is, is money's going to be budgeted? You have to have 3% of your budget now devoted to maintenance by RIDE regulations. So that, that has to be worked out with the school committee and with, with the town council to make certain that maintenance is being performed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Siafi?
Thank you. Well, first of all, prior to COVID, we were considering ourselves the, the council of maintenance. We felt very strongly that that was a top priority with all of us, and it was showing a good neighbor effort to the school department. We wanted them to know we care. You know, we may have differences of opinions, but, but we want what's right for our children. We want our teachers to work in the right environment. So we were trying to make that point when all of a sudden COVID came upon us. But I think in the future, in order to, to bridge this, we need to remain flexible, we need to have a lot of options out there, and we, we can't go with the digging in the heels. We've got to stop that. It hasn't worked for us before, so we have to realize and respect each other's ideas and, and, you know, move forward in the right direction, in the right vein. There's, there's no room for egos in this. This is all about what's best for our kids, our teachers, our families here in Westerly. Thank you.
Ms. Jorno?
Councilor Siafi is right. That is exactly what has failed us in the past, is that there are two sides to this. There should not be. There should be one side. There's one goal. We need a school. We need schools that are going to be up to date to the point where our kids are healthy. We don't have to worry about health concerns. We don't have to worry about the air, the quality of, you know, their day-to-day. Are they healthy going to school? That's, that's, that has to stop. We all have to work towards one goal. It can't be State Street versus Bradford. That's ridiculous, and we all know it. It can't be all or nothing. If we want to, you know, renovate certain schools and try to do something else, we have to be open to those ideas. How we bridge that gap, and how we began to bridge that gap prior to this entire COVID, is that that building subcommittee, the school building subcommittee, was open to ideas. They sat down. They allowed people to come forward. I was fortunate enough to come up with a plan that thought outside the box, that would bring together the entire community, even including middle school, high school, and preschool. And that's what we need. Thank you.
Mr. LaPietra?
I think the problem in the past is, they always seem to go for too much. We could use a $30, $30 million bond, they go for 72. We want, we want one turf field for $2 million, we go for two turf fields for $3 million. I think if we just counsel dial it back a little bit, we could get something meaningful done. Just the stick and shot keeps getting passed on to the, to the public, and maybe a little more cooperation between the two of us would help that. Thank you.
Mr. Overton?
Thank you. I see the problem in that I believe that this past council has been very hostile to the schools. And I think that culminated itself when they voted to shut the RIDE application down. That would have denied potentially tens of millions of dollars of matching grant funds coming into this town. And I think it was a very irresponsible vote, and it didn't show good faith. One thing that, in the past, is I get along very well with school committees, whether they're Democrat or Republican. I never give them everything that they want, but I do treat them with respect and dignity, and I will work with them to find solutions to this issue. I enjoy working with them. Education is extremely important to me. I'm a product of public education, and I will work very well with the school committee. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
I think the question of why did it fail was a few things. Number one, I think we had Vision 2020itis. We had rebuilt the high school. We had built a middle school. And I think, you know, the money kept adding up. And I think when that first bond failed, after that, it became a war of personalities. It wasn't about the children. It was about, you killed my plan, now I'm going to kill your plan. And that was sad. It was sad for me to watch that happen, as personalities dictated the outcome rather than children. I get along with the school committee. I'm married to the chairwoman, so how can I not get along with them? I don't find any problem working together with them. But at the end of the day, they have to include the town council in the process. It's really hard when people come to us and say, this is the plan we're having, put it on the ballot without any, in any input. And I think that's where we had a little bit of tension with the schools and the town council. But we have to move forward. We have to come up with a plan, and absolutely right, it's got to be less money, because no one's going to go for $72 million.
Ms. Ahern?
My go-forward is extremely practical. I was fortunate enough to take a day trip with several members of the school committee, Tim Killam, Christine Sweeney, and Christine Cook, and we went to see the renovation project in East Lime. And it was truly inspirational. And I think that, to Mr. LaPietra's point, we could reverse engineer a number that is practical and get us what East Lime has. I think that we all walked away from that project very, very impressed. So my go-forward would be, hopefully, that we could consider that kind of a proposal. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. They did a wonderful job there. And I think those three members of the school committee were equally as impressed. So that would be my go-forward. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. The town council has twice asked the voters of Westerly to revoke term limits for the town council, and twice the voters of Westerly have voted overwhelmingly no. With the existing two-year terms, it is possible that in 2022, the town council will only have one member of the 2020 council eligible to run for reelection. To prevent serious loss of institutional memory, will you support a ballot measure in 2021 to change the town council terms to four years staggered, which would be identical to the school committee members? Why or why not? Mr. Belanger, please begin.
Well, I'm all for term limits, but I think two years is a little bit. We can go for a four-year term. I support changing that, wholeheartedly. I don't, what do you mean by staggered? Can you be a little more specific? I said a four-year term, and then having you take time off, and then you could run for another four-year term?
Like the school committee, has staggered out of the body, only four would run at any one time out of the...
Okay. I got you. No, I, if you're doing a good job, the people are going to know it. And I, I will support a four-year term. Two four-year terms, I support that. I think two years just doesn't, doesn't seem like enough time sometimes, but I would support two four-year terms. And then, just like now, you have to take time off, take a term off, and then you can rerun.
Mr. Duhamel?
I would support four-year terms. I have supported four-year terms. Staggered terms, I'm, I don't know how to do, that would kick off, but I would support staggered terms as well. I've been on the council for 16 years, and I can tell you, there is so much to comprehend, to understand. Two years is just not enough time, no matter how energetic you are. And I've, we've all served with great enthusiasm. So I think two years, and then another two years, it cuts short a lot of the value that you could bring to the, to the electorate, to the Wesley Town Council. So I would very much be in favor of two four-year terms and staggered, if we can figure that out, how to enact that.
Thank you. Ms. Siafi?
I agree. I would, I'll vote for the four-year terms. Being staggered, I also agree that two years is definitely not long enough. You're first getting into the rhythm of things, and the next thing you know, oops, time to go. Quite honestly, I would have done away with the terms, because also, if you don't, if you don't like the job that a council person is doing, then your right to vote is what you need to exercise. You wouldn't vote them back in if you didn't like them. So they could be there for however long they need be. The power is in the hands of the people. But just for argument's sake, I would vote for the, the four-year staggered terms, if that's the best we can do. Thank you.
Ms. Jorno?
This, this question's a little difficult, because I believe in the voters, and I know that if someone has a dedication and they want to continue on, and they're doing a great job, then let them continue on. I don't see a problem with that. But they voted that down, so that's not an issue. But the other thing is, four years is a long commitment for certain people. You know, maybe they wanted to do, you know, maybe they wanted the two years. That's why they decided to go for town council. We only have nine people sitting here tonight. I wish we had 20 people running for town council. But we couldn't get anybody to run. Look around. So you, if you can't get them to commit to a two-year term, how are we going to get people to run for a four-year term? That's quite the question. So I just want to encourage people, no matter what the terms are, get out there and throw your hat in there and run for office, because we need you running, and allow people to actually have a vote. The more, the merrier. But two years, four years, make a commitment, get involved. Thank you.
Mr. LaPietra?
Well, if the people vote for Philip Jarvan and myself, we won't really have this issue. So there you go. But honestly, the people who've spoken twice, as it is, you could still be on the council eight out of 10 years. That's, that's pretty good. And as far as having a learning curve, I got into watching the town council meetings during the Robert rules, where I seen nothing happen at all for six months. So I don't know if a learning curve is going to take that long. I would leave it the way it is. The people who've spoken twice, leave it alone. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Overton?
I'm going to echo that. I think that people have spoken. This is, this is what they want. The town council job is a tough position, and a two-year commitment, I do think is appropriate. There's a lot of stress involved in this particular position. And I mean, obviously, there is arguments in the, for the four-year staggered terms. You know, that, that really, you know, does make sense to me. But as far as that goes, the voters have spoken, and we should just leave them alone. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah, you know, the people that really need the term limits are these people up in the State House that have been there for like 35 years, or these people in Congress that hang out for 40 years. They're the ones that need two years off. It is a little ridiculous that you serve now four years on the town council, and you got to step off. And I do think in two years is going to be a huge gap when it comes to institutional knowledge. I say that the... I, I say that the 2014 or 16 council, whichever it was, sorry, Phil, that came up with this, the way they put on the ballot, I think it was done poorly. The wording was wrong. They didn't put it in one question. So instead of saying what they thought was we're going to vote for four-year terms and two terms, meaning eight years, and the people came back with something different and they totally screwed it up. So unfortunately, we tried to undo it and people didn't understand it the way it was worded from our council. So you know what? It is what it is. It's fine to take two years off. I just wish we could extend those term limits to our state legislature.
Ms. Ahern.
You know, I'm of several minds of it. I agree with the counselors who have said that two years is really just about enough time to dig in. Four years is a lot to ask because if you do it right, it is an awful lot of work. I agree with Caswell that it was incredibly confusing the way the questions were posed when there were so many of them. But I also agree, you know, with the other counselors who said, then just leave it alone. So I think the furthest that I would be willing to go is the next council should probably ask the public, what do they think? You're going to lose however many counselors last time, next time potentially. Do you think that this is something that we should reconsider or not? And let, let people step forward. If they think that we should consider changing it, if I get back on, or whoever does, then we should consider changing it. If not, eh, leave it alone.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I mean, I think the voters have spoken, two-year terms is what they want. And the down, you know, what I never heard anybody say is they just, you know, could be they're saying, well, we'll give them a chance, but if we don't like them, we can get them out in two years. So there is some side, there's no recall, so that's their recall, don't vote for them. You know, if you do a good job on the first two years and you run again, you'll get to go. So you get your four years. But I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's like a yo-yo. We've been going up and down with that, just, just leave it alone. It's worked, it's been working fine since they started, so let's just leave it alone.
Thank you, everyone, for your responses. This will be the last one-minute response question for this portion of the forum. Governor Raimondo, in asking for a ballot question to remove the word plantations from the state name, said, quote, "Our work to dismantle systemic racism in Rhode Island did not start today and it will not end today, but we can rise together and make meaningful progress toward racial equity now. How do you think this applies to Westerly?" Mr. Belanger, please begin.
Well, I don't know about any, anybody else who's sitting here, the nine of us, but I've never referred to where I live as the state of Rhode Island or Providence Plantations. And I know that anybody who's from Massachusetts or Virginia doesn't refer to their state as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the Commonwealth of Virginia. Words have meaning. I know I'm personally not going to vote to change the name of the state. That's it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote to change the name of the state. I call it Rhode Island. If it's on an official document, that's, you know, that says the state of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, so be it. Any of my personal friends or people that I know, acquaintances here, I'd ask, I actually asked about a dozen people today, they're like, oh, I've never called it that, I'm probably not going to vote to change it. It doesn't matter to them. I think if, if that's the kind of thing that matters and is on a referendum, my personal opinion, I think it's.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. Your time is up. Mr. Duhamel.
I, I would support the governor in, in this initiative to remove plantation. I, I understand the history of the plantations, the Providence plantations, there were villages around Providence. It wasn't necessarily slavery, slavery issue. And we know very well that Rhode Island did have very strong slavery ties. So the definition of plantations has definitely moved over to the inequities of the slavery. So I'm in favor of taking it out. But one thing I want to make, it's also part of this, is protecting our culture, Wesley's culture. And the Columbus statue has come under somewhat of scrutiny in Providence and New London. And I, I want to say strongly that we, we are very much in favor of keeping the Columbus statue and what the Columbus statue stands for with our proud heritage in Wesley of, of our Italian heritage.
Thank you. Ms. Siafi.
Thank you. You know, I would, I would vote to remove plantation. I too never acknowledged that. I said I lived in Rhode Island. I didn't, I didn't write Providence Plantation on a business envelope. So I, I don't have a problem removing it. My problem is, is that we have now taken so many words and put that negativity towards it, that that's what bothers me. To take away plantation, yeah, I, I get it. It was wrong, it was insulting. I'm sure it wasn't meant to be when it was incorporated into the name Providence Plantations, but it, it has now taken on a different tone. So fine, if we need to drop it, we will. As far as that Columbus statue that we have, we are a proud community and I, I think you have to stand behind some of your beliefs. Thank you.
Ms. Giorno.
I would not vote to change the name of Rhode Island. And the reason why is because we're the smallest state with the longest name and be proud of it. And I'll have to be quite honest, you know, if I thought for any reason at all that the definition of the word plantation would be a negative connotation towards anything to deal with slaves, then definitely we would take it into consideration. But knowing that that's not the case because we've actually looked into it, I'm sorry for those that are far too sensitive about things, but unfortunately, you know, you look into things too much and you start changing everything. Rhode Island, R-H-O-D-E, comes from the island of roads. So if you're Greek, don't be offended by us using road as part of our name as well. We need to look at things that really truly matter. We need to support everyone within our community and locally here in Westerly, we do so. When they said they wanted a peaceful protest for anything in this town, not just Black Lives Matter, not for anything, we stood up and said, we support you. And we do support you, but I will not change the name, I will not vote to do so. Thank you.
Mr. LaPetra.
Well, I'd like to make it clear, I'm not running for town council to try to solve racial inequality or heroin epidemics or anything like that. I just want to maybe keep a hotel off the Winter Park golf course, make the comp plan more transparent. This is above me. I would say if the Washington Redskins could be the Washington football team, I guess we could be Rhode Island instead of Rhode Island's plantations. But that's, that's all I can say about that. Thank you.
Mr. Overton.
My feeling is that, you know, we've become offended about everything. I'm not about to rewrite history, I'm not about to change history. The name of the, of the state has nothing to do with slavery, it's just history. When the, when it was the king signed the land over to the settlements. So no, absolutely not. I'm not going to rewrite history. I'm going to thoroughly protect our Columbus statue. It's a representative of very proud Italian heritage in this town. And I think that's really about it on that issue. I just want to focus on, on moving this town forward and letting, and having it run correctly. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Well, we're forced, or we're fortunate in Westerly not to have had violence. We're fortunate in Westerly to not have happening to us what's happening in the cities. Obviously, we have a different makeup in Westerly and, and things just aren't what it is in, say, like Providence or New York City. So we're, we're fortunate that we don't have that. Look, I'm a student of history. I, I had, I went to BU for history. I don't want my history rewritten. I want my history ugly, good, whatever it is. And so I think this whole political correct generation, I think this whole situation to change history, tear down statues, defund police, I'm against it. And if people have a problem with that, they don't have to vote for me. I'm proud of, you know, my heritage, just like everyone else is proud of their heritage and we're proud of the Italian heritage with the Columbus statue, which is why we had the resolution to support it. I think everybody can be proud of their heritage. I don't think anyone's heritage now needs to be shamed or, or things like that. So, you know, I don't care about the name of the state of Rhode Island because I never used it and it's not my decision, but it probably should have been a referendum, not an executive order.
Ms. Ahern.
Well, I guess this is the lawyer in me. I'm of two minds about that word plantation. The practical part of me says, no one really understands that this will, will be relatively expensive. If you want to start taking and Providence plantations off of all of the seals and the records and everything else, you know, there's a hidden cost at a time when really we don't need that. But the other side of me says, you know, it, plantations, for better or worse, yes. It's a word with historical connotations that offend many, many people. And how does this apply to Westerly? Well, it applies to Westerly and to the state of Rhode Island because for better or worse, this is a national conversation. And we are in it, whether we like to be in it or whether we don't. So again, I, I'm really on the fence about it.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I'm, I just think at the end of the day, if we can make other people feel happy by taking off a name that we never use, why wouldn't we do that? If it makes somebody feel better, why not? It's, it doesn't hurt anybody. As everybody said, I mean, remember when you were in grade school, we're the smallest state with the biggest name? Well, you know, but that was when you were in, you know, first, second grade. Now, we're, we're all grown up and I think we can just try to feel other people and make them feel better by taking off a name that we don't use.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. And I'm going to ask a follow-up question to everyone that was kind of a part of this question. We've discussed, I think, everyone, the question of removing plantations from the name of Rhode Island. But I'd like to ask everyone, do you believe that systemic racism exists in Westerly? And these don't have to be one-minute responses, but if you would like to elaborate with a sentence or two, you're welcome to. We'll keep it, the responses under 30 seconds. We'll start with Mr. Duhamel.
I do not believe there is systemic racism in Westerly. I see a lot of goodwill, kind hearts, people that are volunteering to help, help out. I coached Little League baseball, I coached Pee-wee football. I see a community that works well together, that, that wants to, wants to help one another. And I, I don't see any, any sign of that at all in Westerly.
Ms. Siafi.
I do not believe that Westerly has a problem here. I must tell you, as, as a mother of a police officer and my support in the town of Westerly for this police department, I will tell you that you will not find a, a small town such as ours that is so solid in the way we treat every human being. There is no racism here. It doesn't exist. It may exist elsewhere. And as a New Yorker, I can tell you, it does exist elsewhere, but not here, not in this town. And I am so proud to be a part of it.
Ms. Giorno.
I'm very proud to be part of this town as well, but unfortunately, there's racism everywhere. We don't have it to the extent that other places do because I believe we do a great job in, in trying to cure generational ignorance that cause racism. So I just want to thank our educational system and the adults here that teach their children to treat each other the way that they want to be treated. And that's why we overcome, because we look at the good in others instead of holding it against them. So yes, we live in a great place, but unfortunately, there is racism everywhere.
Mr. LaPetra.
I can't beat what Susie just said. Exactly. There's a little bit of racism everywhere, but Wesley does, very, very small in Wesley, we do a great job. It's not in our police force. We're not a city, but there is a little bit of racism everywhere in the world. You can't argue that.
Mr. Overton.
Thank you. No, I don't believe that there's systemic racism here in Westerly. I frankly don't know anybody who cares what color anybody's skin is. So no, I don't, I don't see it. We're a nice community, everybody gets along for the most part. We have an excellent police department, there's very little problems with our police department. I've fully funded them in the past, I will fully fund them in the future. I'm very proud of our town and I'm very proud of our police department. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Yeah, I don't think there's systemic racism. Look, I think it's a great, it's a great word that CNN likes to use. I think there's definitely, in, in many places, there is that issue and it could be systemic. I just don't think Westerly is that place. You know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm completely ignorant, maybe I have no clue, but in all my years here in Westerly, I just, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen like hate crimes and, and this kind of thing that's maybe happening in the big cities. So I don't think that Westerly is systemically racist, no.
Ms. Ahern.
I, I agree with, with Caswell. I, I don't think I'm tone deaf on this. In, in my 21 years back in Westerly, I, I personally have not seen it. I have not been advised of it. No one has called me to, to complain of it. I think the key word that you use there is systemic. I think that we would have heard about it, certainly at the council level, given, as I said before, the national conversation. And, and we have not. So, you know, as a country, do we, do we face ageism, sexism, and everything-ism? Yes, but I have not seen systemic racism here.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, I mean, I, I don't think Wesley has a set, you know, a real bad race. But then again, as a few mentioned, there is probably some racism. But then again, look at all of us. We're not the side that gets the racism. So unless we walk in their shoes, we don't know exactly what happens to them. We hope we know. We think we have nice neighbors, and I think we do. I think 99% of the time, yes. But then again, we're looking, we're not looking at it from their.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Mr. Belanger.
Well, I've lived in Texas and Hawaii and California, and if you want to compare them to here, then the answer to your question will be no. I do not feel there is a issue of systemic racism here. Councilman Giorno brought up a good point, that the generation of that, my generation, that was taught by their parents that you don't look at skin color, you don't look at, you know, race and gender, were there. We don't have a, I don't think we have a systemic racist, racism problem, but yes, there is what you would consider a talking point of racism, which is such a broad term right now, to where racism 15 years ago was something different than it is today. And no, I do not believe here in Westerly, that is, that's an issue.
Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you, candidates, all of you, for your responses. That concludes the one-minute response section of, of the evening, and we will move on to yes/no questions. I will read a question. If your answer is yes, please raise your hand visibly so that you can see on your camera. And I will state the names of the candidates who said yes for, for people who might be listening. Is everyone clear? Great. First question, will you support more than one public hearing on the new comprehensive plan and on the proposed ordinance amendments prior to voting? Okay, we have, every candidate is raising their hands. I won't read all nine, but for people listening, we have hands raised by all candidates. Number two, with the development of several new projects in downtown, will you vote for additional parking to be made available by the end of 2021? We have hands raised by Ms. Siafi, Ms. Giorno, Ms. Ahern, Mr. Cook, Mr. Overton, Mr. Duhamel, Mr. McEwen.
We're negotiating to buy additional parking on the national gridlock.
Mr. Belanger, also just raised his hand. It has been estimated as of Sunday, July 26, 2020, that it will cost $3.1 million to install artificial turf on the two high school fields and upgrade lighting. Do you support the installation of artificial turf?
Is this, is this a two-part question or?
This is a one-part question.
Okay, so the lights and the turf are the same thing as what you're referring to?
Yeah, you can include both, actually.
Can I do half? Because I don't believe, I feel for the lights, not the turf.
Let's, this is about the installation of both.
So I can't. So I can't.
We have hands raised by Ms. Jorno, Mr. Cook, Mr. Overton, Mr. LaPietra, and Mr. Duhamel. Question four, will you support a bond referendum in 2021 to fix the school athletic fields? We have hands raised by Mr. Belanger and Mr. McEwen.
That's, that's not a good yes or no question. I'll have to just point that out. There are so many elements to that question.
Right, right. Neither was the one before that.
Yes or no question, I'll have to say. It really is not, it's not fair.
These were, this was a question submitted by Westerly residents or the League of Women Voters South County.
Great question. If we had two to three minutes to respond, because there's no way, yes or no, there's no way you know the facts behind that question. So I'm sorry, that's an unfair question to answer.
Yeah, so it's lights and turf. That's kind of unfair, too.
We'll move on to the fifth question.
There you go.
These again, were all submitted by Westerly residents or people on the League of Women Voters South County. So they, you know, and of course, true, false, I mean, yes, no.
The same as artificial turf?
I can't hear you.
Who's a lifetime first is that you're talking about artificial turf, the lifetime turf? Is that what you're referring to?
I, the question doesn't specify, but it says artificial turf. Okay, let's move on to question five. If elected, will you vote to establish an ordinance to regulate the quarrying business? Q U A R R Y I N G. Quarrying. We have hands from Ms. Siafi, Ms. Jorno, Ms. Ahern, Mr. Cook, Mr. Overton, Mr. Belanger, Mr. McEwen, Mr. LaPietra, and Mr. Duhamel. We have hands now from all, all candidates. Question six, do you oppose any commercial and or residential development on open space land? The question, I'll repeat it again, is do you oppose any commercial and or residential development on open space land?
I object to that question. That's just not a yes or no question, Antonia.
Thank you.
I personally am going to pass on that one.
I agree.
Everyone is permitted to pass on any question. These again, I will repeat, were submitted by Westerly residents or League of Women Voters South County. Everyone, as I said at the beginning, can pass on questions. This is an option to raise your hand if you so wish to.
Right, if you don't raise your hand, you're saying no, which is kind of this vague and feels like.
Well, you can articulate that you'd like to pass on the question.
I go like this for pass.
Yeah, there we go.
That's a great system. Okay, guys, we have.
They're all subjects to be talked about in further detail.
The, the event is limited in time. I'm reading the questions that were submitted, but I will read aloud the people that are passing, which is allowed in the thing, of course. So I'll read aloud the people passing, and if anyone had their hand raised, I can read that as well. We have passes from Ms. Siafi, Ms. Jorno, Mr. Belanger, Ms. Ahern, Mr. Cook.
Just read the question again.
Yes, the question was as submitted again, do you oppose, do you oppose any commercial and or residential development on open space land? We have hands raised. I'll finish the passes, by the way, because I was doing, reading that. We have passes from Ms. Siafi, Ms. Jorno earlier. Please do your pass hand if you want the pass. Mr. McEwen, Ms. Ahern. We had pass hands earlier from Mr. Cook and Mr. Belanger. I believe they're still passing and Mr. Duhamel as well. We do have hands raised yes to this question for Mr. Overton and Mr. LaPietra. Question seven, do you support selling the Bradford School and property for development of affordable housing?
Affordable housing.
We have a pass from Ms. Siafi, and we have no other hands, yes, from the candidates. And the last question before, just the last yes, no question, is do you believe Westerly needs a community center to include a teen component in downtown Westerly? I'll repeat the question again for those. Do you believe Westerly needs a community center to include a teen component in downtown Westerly?
Yeah, like they used to have Teen Night, the YMCA.
If you raise your hand, if you say yes, don't have to raise your hand if you believe no, or if you wish to pass, again, you can do the pass hand. We have yeses from Ms. Siafi, Ms. Jorno, Mr. Belanger, Ms. Ahern, Mr. Cook, Mr. LaPietra, and Mr. Duhamel. Thank you, candidates, for your hands. And we will, at this point, move into closing statements. We are running towards the, and actually, we do have, we do have one, a time for one additional question. So we will do one additional one minute portion, just so we don't end and go straight into closing statements. So this will, again, you'll have one minute to respond. And the question is, according to the Westerly Sun, Westerly is 519 units below the state mandated goal for affordable housing units. The economic consequences of the pandemic may increase the number of people who are homeless or unable to afford their present rentals or mortgages. What specific initiatives would you support to address Westerly's high rents and lack of affordable housing units? We will begin with candidate six for this, Ms. Siafi.
That is a very tough question. I mean, in this, in this environment, who knows what tomorrow is going to bring for us? I'm, I'm very sensitive to, to our residents who have the need. Unfortunately, we don't, we don't have the, like you say, we're short units to provide housing. So I would hope in the future that we can find in some of our newer developments, you obviously have to have a certain portion of them be affordable. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that happening, but there's so much that's at a standstill at this point in time. I don't know how, how we can possibly make that happen, but I'm all for hearing of ideas that, you know, that will come forward from perhaps builders and, you know, entrepreneurs who want to set up developments for these people.
Thank you. Ms. Jorno.
I think that this question is, you have to have a broad approach. Yes, we need affordable housing here in Westerly. Of course, that's the case, because everything is relative to each other. We're looking at the old Bradford Mill, some of the proposals that have been going forward for that for housing. We've looked at things over on Tower Street, right off of Tower Street for housing. There's proposals out there for different locations within our town. The reason why it's so important is because if we can, we can have affordable housing and we can ensure the fact that we're going to increase the number of students in our schools, if you have this, if you provide jobs to people. So we need to utilize the empty buildings that we have within our town to bring technology firms here and other businesses that will thrive so people can get jobs, keep their jobs, have their families, and afford to live here so that our schools can profit from the more students, the better within those schools. We know what we've gone through last year. It's all relative to each other. So yes, we need affordable housing, but we need jobs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaPietra.
Gotcha, I'm sorry. I think Wesley already has an abundance of multifamily homes, you know, the mill inquiry days. I don't know if I support any more low affordable housing. We could refer, I don't know, can I refer him to Joe and Treats, can I say that? No, I can't say that. Just, we don't really need any low, I don't think I would vote for any low and affordable housing. I think we have a, we don't have enough single family homes as it is. That's, that's my opinion. And, and, nevermind, turn us off with the blue.
Mr. Overton.
Thank you. It's a very good question and a very big challenge for the community. To have a, a robust community where young families can, can, can thrive and grow, you do need an appropriate amount of affordable housing, but there's no big magic wand to make that happen. You have to look at each and every proposal that is put forward by the builders in this town and work at one, one step at a time. But there's no magic wand to make that happen, but I'm all for increasing the amount of affordable housing that we do have. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
It's a tough question. I mean, you're talking about a community where there's houses that are going for $16.5 million to Taylor Swift, right? So how do you put an affordable house, you know, anywhere near that? And, and what's happening now, any house that's between like 250 and 320 is getting snatched up by folks from out of state. I don't blame them, right? But I mean, that's the free market system. Look, we're at 5.1% affordable. We need to get to 10% or the state's going to do something. Now, they've been threatening to do something for 20 years, and I'm not sure what exactly it is they'll do. The other thing that has to be kept in mind is that affordable housing isn't what people always used to think what affordable housing was. It's not some tenement homes. It's not the slums. It's not the, affordable housing means like someone who's like 24 years old, coming back from college, can actually buy a house in Westerly. So, you know, anytime a proposal comes up like that, like for the mill or anywhere else, the NIMBYs come out, not in my backyard. We're all for affordable housing, but not in my neighborhood. And therein lies your challenge.
Ms. Ahern.
I just think people need to understand that there is a difference between low mod housing, which is very much state driven, and what we call affordable housing, which is really the better term for that, is workforce housing, so that the nurses and the police officers and the teachers can afford somewhere reasonable to live. And this is the classic intersection between the state and the locals having to figure this out with a healthy dose of input from the building community. This really isn't something that's strictly under the purview of any town council. I will say that the comprehensive plan addresses this in numerous sections, and I think very creatively, because there is no one stop shopping when it comes to the answer to this issue.
Mr. McEwen.
Moderate housing is, as Sharon said, but I put closer to, is for our children. So they can afford to live here. The biggest problem, land. We don't have enough land. Our ideal of a single family home is not going to work for affordable housing. We are going to have to increase the density of homes allowed on land. That is the only way we're going to get more units. Increase capacity on not like 6,000 and 8,000 square feet per house. It's going to have to get, it's going to have to be two and three story. That's what's going to have to happen to meet the need with the amount of land that we have in inventory that is open. It's really not that odd, it's not that hard of, of, you know, I'm a builder, so I understand this, just not allowing us to build products that we need to satisfy the people.
Thank you. Mr. Belanger.
So, Councilwoman Ahern and Castle are actually right. People misconstrued median income housing for low income housing. It's not what they're looking for. If everybody knows that to own or buy a house in Wesley, you have to, about the average of $92,000 a yearly income. That's not what police officers make. And why are our police officers, this is a specific example, why are police officers from Westerly have to live in other communities and spend their money in other communities? So with what Mr. McEwen said, we can look at more plans, get better plans. And if we don't like the plans that were being submitted, we'll come up with our own plans. Do I have the actual answer sitting here at this forum right now? I don't, but it's doable. Everything's doable. We can make that happen. We just have to work a little bit harder instead of, we just have to understand, let people understand it's not low income housing. It's not the high rises. It's median income housing. So anybody who's making like, you know, 50 to $80,000 can afford to live in Westerly, send their children to the schools here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. The time is up. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
Mr. Duhamel.
Affordable housing is one of the major tenants of the comprehensive plan, creating affordable housing. How does affordable housing look? I mean, the families are, that make $70,000 are considered to be moderate income, that that would qualify for affordable housing. So how do, how do we get those families to stay in Westerly and not leave? Our police officers, our, our children that grew up in Wesley, how do we keep them in Wesley? And we want them to have clean, affordable housing. There are jobs coming. Electric boat is expanding. Our next door neighbor Stonington is building clean affordable apartments, elderly apartments, initial affordable apartments. So Wesley can look, look towards that, that goal. We can also look towards renovating existing apartments in the North End. Wesley CDC did that with a number of units going back five years, and they've been successful. So there's many ways that affordable housing can be built, but Wesley has to stand up and help create those and have a public partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Duhamel. And thank you to all the candidates for your responses. This brings us to the closing, this closing portion of the evening, which is the closing statements. All the candidates will have a minute for their closing statements, and we will be going in reverse order based off of the candidates' numbers, beginning with candidate nine, Mr. Overton.
Thank you very much. Basically, I'm going to summarize my campaign into six bullet points. My goal is to repair the local economy in a safe manner, working with the local business community and working with the state to find ideas that will help them prosper. The pandemic has, has just totally wrecked some parts of our business community, and I want to be there to help them. I want to keep taxes low and affordable, and you do that by taking a very close look at the budgets. I want to protect the local environment. I want to, to not build on every single piece of open space that we have in, in Westerly. I want to support our local police department. I want to help to work with the school committee to solve their challenges. And as, as an elected official, I will protect the Constitution, including the constitutional right to access the rights of way, of public rights of way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Next, we'll have Mr. LaPietra.
I'd like to just finish with, I wanted to respond once to the low and medium housing. If we build it, it's not going to be for police officers. It's going to be for the hotels they put up on the golf course or other summertime help that can afford to live there when they're laid off in the winter. You know, I hope people don't think it's going to be $85,000 police officers and firemen moving in there. So I just wanted to finish by saying that. And as far as electing me to town council, I think I represent some different interests. You know, my clientele are year round Wesley residents. I think we have, we have engineers, contractors, we have, we have an MBA director representing terrorism. We have a lot of different things represented, and I'd like to bring something different to the town council, more of a voice for the middle class in the year round resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPietra. We will continue with Ms. Jorno.
I just want to summarize by saying that the past almost two years in office has been awesome. I really do enjoy being on this council. I enjoy working with every individual on this council. We may not have all agreed at times. We may not have always gone along with each other for certain things, and that's what makes it great. I value each and every one of them, and I have to say, we did set out on a mission to be the maintenance council, and we have accomplished that goal in so many ways. And in so many ways that we couldn't even predict in the future, you know, we couldn't, we didn't plan this COVID. We didn't know what was going on, but we took it on and we, we've overcome so much in such a small amount of time. And I look forward to seeing what we can overcome in the next two years. So, so far, so good. I asked for your vote in November, and thank you very much for allowing me to serve this town. I love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Siafi.
Thank you. I've enjoyed this evening, and I've enjoyed my time on council. I will tell you that my, my tagline has been straight talk and honest opinions. That's what you get from me. Regardless of the tax bracket, I'm going to do what's right for the residents of of this community. I'm going to fight for my PPE, which is the police, the public, and education. I will do what I think is best for many people, for all the people. You can't please everyone. So you try to, you try to go with what's going, what's right from the heart. And that's where I operate from, strictly from the heart. I will tell you that I have, I have, as of today, went and reviewed all of the public right-of-ways. It has now become very important to me that we resolve these problems that face our community. So I thank you. I hope that you will vote for me on November 3. I look forward to serving this community to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duhamel?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the NPR for holding this forum. I can say that the last term has been very rewarding. I've enjoyed some, all of the challenges, and we've had some tremendous challenges when you think back to COVID, the tragedy at Babcock Hall, there's been, Babcock Village, there's been just incredible events that Wesley's gone through. But with that said, there's going to be quite a bit of work moving forward, improving our school facilities, improving the wastewater treatment plant. These are major dollar items that I can bring my engineering expertise to, to help save money for the taxpayers. And I intend to work hard for Wesley, should you elect me to the town council going forward. I hope you vote for Chris Duhamel for Wesley Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belanger?
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. This is quite an interesting event. This is my first one. And to everybody who's already, who are incumbent, your two years have been, I've been watching everybody for two years. And so I'm actually looking forward to being, sitting in one of those seats come January. So my platform pretty much goes down beach access right-of-ways, public safety, the water department, which is extremely important, sidewalks, which nobody ever even talked about today. And we actually didn't even mention beach right-of-ways, which happens to be on thousands of Westerly residents' minds, because it's very important for generations of people. So, right there in a nutshell, just like Ms. Siafi, you know, the PPE, I thought that was, that was pretty, that was pretty good. So I'm on, I'm on board with that. I would love to be able to serve the town of Westerly that I was raised in, went to school in, owned businesses in. And so I appreciate your vote on November 3, or between October 14 and November 2 at the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McEwen?
Yes, I, I'm sitting here, everybody listening to why they want to run and this and that. And, and I just say, I just thoroughly enjoy all parts of this. Every part is important. It may, you know, because it's important to a few people here, a few people there. But, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the day, everything that comes before us is important. And I always try to treat it that way. And I, the one thing I can always promise everybody is I ain't going to be the cheapest son of a gun you ever met in your life. I don't waste money. I don't like to waste money. And to answer one question that came around, you know, we shut down the school with a $72 million bond. You know why? Because we couldn't afford to pay it. It's that simple. Math does not lie. Math tells the truth. And we, as a council, realize that we can't, could not afford that amount of money.
Ms. Ahern?
I think that if tonight has underscored anything, it's underscored the fact that there are numerous issues that came before the prior council. We've only scratched the surface of the issues that will come before the next council, whomever they may be. I'm afraid I lived up to my reputation tonight as a nerd. I will continue to do that if you vote for me. I have enjoyed the collaborative factor of this council. I know that upon occasion, they have changed my minds. I think that I have managed, upon occasion, to change theirs. And I do think that we have listened to the public, and we will continue to listen to the public. And I really think that that's the most you can really ask of your local elected officials. So thank you for the opportunity tonight, League of Women Voters, and I enjoyed interacting with everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cook?
Well, this has been a much nicer debate than we all watched the other night. We're very kind to each other, and nobody swore yet. I thought if anyone was going to swear, it'd probably be me. You know, I didn't mention at the beginning, I've lived in Wesley my whole life as well. I mean, my family first came here, believe it or not, in 1865. And we have a long history in this town. And I was born in 1974, and I've spent most of my life here, having lived other places. Went to St. Pius School, growing up. I'm very involved in Christ Church, the chorus of Westerly. These are great organizations that I've always loved to support. And my kids, they go to school here. Maddie and Leah, my two daughters, go to the middle school, and my stepson Louis does, too. And my wife, I'm very proud that she's the chairperson of the Wesley School Committee. So, you know, my family's got a life of sort of dedicating to service, sort of thing like that. Sounds kind of corny, but I enjoy helping people find what they need to find in town to help them with their, with their problem. And I would love to continue to serve you one more time. So please vote for me on November 3, or in your mail-in ballot.
Thank you to all the candidates very much for your closing statements and your responses throughout the evening. It was really a pleasure to hear from you all, and I'm sure everyone who tuned in in Westerly appreciated hearing your responses as well. The League of Women Voters will have a final announcement this evening. But that concludes the final statements and the question portion of the evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to do the closing, and the first thing I'd really like to do is to thank the candidates. And Caswell, you beat me to it. I was going to thank you all for a very civil and informative forum this evening. I wish we had more time to ask you more questions, as there really are a lot of issues. I'd also like to thank our moderator, Ms. Antonia Ayers-Brown, and to our viewers on Zoom. I would also like to help, I need to help the many people involved in this forum. First of all, the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund, they provide the funding for this sort of event. The town of Westerly's town manager, Mr. Rooney, and especially Mr. Mark Tate, the IT director, for their help and cooperation. In fact, Mr. Tate has made this possible. I'd also, on this list, like to thank the League of Women Voters, South County members, who have worked many hours on planning this event. And lastly, to the citizens of Westerly, who submitted questions this year, many on the same issues. I've posted a link to where this recorded forum will be posted in a day or two. I hope you can see it on the screen. It will be on the South County League's Facebook, at the League of Women Voters-South County, and it will also be on the State League website, lwvri.org. I need to say that one of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about issues and candidates, so that we can make informed choices when we vote. This year, there are three ways to vote, and I'm just reiterating this because the league held the voter registration drive on National Voter Registration Day, and we had lots and lots and lots of questions. So here we go. You can vote in person at the polls November 3. You can vote early in person at the Westerly Town Hall, beginning October 14 through November 2. And lastly, you may vote by mail. The deadline to apply for a mail ballot application is October 13, and the Secretary of State is mailing applications, not ballots, applications for a ballot to every registered voter. If you don't get one, go online, and you can apply there. Please note, if you have applied for a mail ballot, and then decide you want to vote in person, early at town hall, or at your polling place, you can, but you will be given a provisional ballot. Your vote will be counted last, to ensure you have not voted twice. The last thing I want to mention is that you can track your mail ballot at what you see on the screen, vote.sosRI.gov. On that site, you can register to vote, check your voter record for accuracy, find your polling place, and track the status of your mail ballot. Lastly, I'd like to say that our next forums are next week, October 8. At 6:00 PM, we will have the school committee forum, and at 7:45, we will have the state legislators' forum. This ends our forum for tonight. Good evening.
Thank you.
We can go home now?
Go have dinner.
You can go home now, so far as I'm concerned. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Okay. See you at the polls.